We're going to start with a special meeting of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Dickey?
Here.
Vice Chairman Tolles?
Here.
Director Sharnow?
Here.
Director Brown?
Here.
Director Magazine?
Here.
Director LaCron?
Present.
Director Spelitch?
Present.
Thanks very much. First is the consideration of approving the minutes of May 7th and June 4th.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is number four, consideration of the resolution EMCFD 2019-03. Do we have any report?
No, Mayor. This is strictly the tax levy that would be collected in order to go ahead and pay for the debt service for Eagle Mountain Communities Facilities District.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. I will adjourn that one. And we'll move on to the Cottonwood District. I'll call to order and we need another roll call, please.
Chairman Dickey?
Here.
Vice Chairman Tolles?
Here.
Director Sharnow?
Here.
Director Brown?
Here.
Director Magazine? Director LaCron?
Present.
Director Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. First is the same thing, to approve the minutes of May 7th and June 4th.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Seven, nothing. And then Grady?
Yes, thank you. This particular item is very similar to the last item. It is for the Cottonwoods Maintenance District, and this is the levy that essentially allows the revenue to be collected from the residents who live there, and then in turn, the council has authorized the budget for the town to go ahead and maintain the improvements in that district. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. And we'll adjourn that meeting, and we'll go straight into our real meeting. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have Pastor Trent Renner from Christ Church. Hi.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome.
Mayor Dickey and council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I came into this great town three years ago this month, and it's taken me a while to get used to it. And I love it. It's exciting. I've helped over the last three years lead our church from an average age of 68 to about 48. And there are so many young families moving into this community. And you guys get to lead the way in helping that change happen. And I just hold in great respect each and every one of you. We know you're not doing it for the money. We know the budget. You're sure not doing it for the money. You're doing it for the influence. Thank you. And the scriptures say to pray for our government officials. Mayor and council, thanks for allowing prayer to come in here. Appreciate it greatly. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we love you. Thank you for an opportunity, Lord, to influence. I thank you for each leader that's standing behind these podiums with their microphones, with their leadership influence. God, I ask that you would walk with them and give them wisdom, give them courage to make the tough decisions, and to lead us into the future with passion and excitement. Thank you, Lord. I pray that you would bless each and every person that's leading, the people in this room striving to make a difference through government and through their leadership influence. Again, we love you. I pray in Christ's name. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Sharnow?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
What?
Councilmember Magazine?
Present.
Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Here.
It's getting all lively here. Thank you very much. We have reports by mayor, council members, and town manager. Town manager, do you have anything?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here have anything to say what you've been up to or what you're planning on doing between now and summertime? Well, I'll take this opportunity to remind everybody that normally our meetings are 5:30 at the first and third Tuesdays, but we're going to be recessing in July. And then, because we have the league conference, our meeting in August is only going to be once, and it's actually going to be the second Tuesday, which is August 13th. And at that time also, we'll be holding the hearing and the vote for the potential sales tax increase and the public safety fee that we have discussed in the past. Make sure it's fully noticed, and we have extra time for public awareness. We previously had said we might talk about that tonight, but I just want to make sure anybody that was here that would know that we're going to be doing that on August 13th. League of Cities and Towns put out their new laws book because the legislature had adjourned, signed, and die, and so some of those laws are going to be affecting us. So we all got a copy of that, and you can see that at their website, which is azleague.org. So I guess you guys don't have anything else? Okay, we'll move on then to call... Oh, I'm sorry, presentations first. We have a presentation by our captain with MCSO and our monthly update. Thank you. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to start with just some recent topics that I wanted to brief the council members on. We're seeing an increase in the number of calls for service for animals left in hot vehicles as the temperatures are starting to rise. So we just wanted to remind residents, and we've talked with Bob from the Fountain Hills Times about running an article in the paper, just bringing awareness to that. So we're seeing an increase in calls for animals being left in vehicles. So we're asking for the public's help in that, not leaving animals in those vehicles. They get hot really quickly. And oftentimes, we have to either use the fire department or break a window if the owner of the vehicle can't be located. With that being said, we also want to remind folks and ask for their help in checking on their neighbors with heat-related issues, just for neighbors. Just the fire department sent out an email recently. We had a death that was here in the town. It was an elderly subject, but the air conditioning unit in his home hadn't been working for a few days. And while we don't know that the heat was a factor or cause, we just want to remind folks to check on their neighbors and be diligent in checking on them and helping maybe get them the help that they may need if they have issues with the air conditioning in this temperature in the summer right now. One of the things I wanted to explain or talk to you folks about is that the mayor, Mayor Dickey and Grady Miller, the town manager, was very proactive in having MCSO work with the town staff and doing a threat vulnerability assessment for town hall and the community center. This was months ago before any of these national incidents that we've experienced. And we were able to have our criminal intelligence detective come out today and work with some of the staff and prepare that threat vulnerability assessment. That report for the town at some point should be ready with recommendations that the town can look at, town manager, and make determinations. And we offer things in the way of training for staff and talking about plans for evacuations and drills that we can help with. One of the other things I want to talk about was the school resource officer. The town, as we all know, pays for a school resource officer for the high school, and they also conduct the duties at the middle school as well as the elementary school. We were able to have the SRO attend a three-day Arizona School Resource Officer Safety Conference that was held at Talking Stick Arena or Talking Stick Casino, I don't think the arena, the conference rooms there. But some of the topics that were covered were dealing with students with autism, civilian responses to active shooter events, SRO and school staff relationships, predator awareness, school threat responses for school administrators, vaping and e-cigarettes, legal updates, and therapy canines for schools. So these conferences are important for our SROs to go to. It gives them the ability to network with other school resource officers in the state and also keep aware of issues that are affecting our schools. So we're glad to be able to send them to that. The SRO will also be attending the National School Resource Officer Basic School Conference in Texas. That'll be in August. He was supposed to attend this month, but it got delayed. NASRO, which is the National School Resource Officer Basic, excuse me, Conference, they're the organization that sets the standards for law enforcement and school resource officers in the United States. And one of the things, some of the... The school resource officer that we have in Fountain Hills, he's not had the opportunity to go to this training and get his basic certification. That was one thing that I wanted to make sure that we did. A lot of times, if a city or a town has a grant, that's required of the school resource officer. So we were able to get him into this training. He'll be certified. And the course of study for the certificate focuses on the difference of law enforcement within educational environments with insight into the teenage mind. Mentoring students in which the officer will provide, will be provided tools for being a positive role model for youth, and providing the SRO with successful instruction techniques and classroom management tools in order to provide law enforcement-related education. So we believe that was important for the SRO to attend and get that certification. One of the topics I want to talk about was the after-hours process for citizens in town being able to contact MCSO. We do have a call box button at the front of town hall. When town hall is closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, citizens do not have access to MCSO's office because you have to enter through the town. There is a call box out front. I think many folks believe that that's a intercom system to our deputies that are in the building here, and it's not. If you push that button, it'll call our non-emergency line, and it'll connect you to a dispatcher who can then inform a deputy of your needs. So we've had a little bit of conversation about potentially looking into aspects of making that more of an intercom style or maybe having both, because the problem with just an intercom is there are times where there's not staff in the building. If they're all on calls for service, and someone may come up pushing that button expecting to talk to a deputy if it were an intercom, and they may not get a response. So we just want to make sure that they still have the ability to get ahold of dispatch. So we just have to work out logistics and have some further conversation if that is a practical solution. I had the opportunity to present and talk to the men's discussion group yesterday here at the community building, the community center. We were able to talk about the town contract with MCSO. That's been a big topic, so I was able to give them some information about that. We also talked about recent crime trends as well as ways to not be a victim. It was a good hour and a half, a lot of good questions. I believe a lot of good information that was shared. I wanted to provide a couple of crime updates before I'm done here. So back in February, we had some smash-and-grab type incidents at some of the parks, Fountain Hills Park, the Dog Park, and a couple of the trailheads. These are still ongoing investigations, but we have been working with the Attorney General's Office. They were able to contact some of our victims and let them know that they had some of their property recovered from certain arrests. With working with them, and some of the fingerprints, we were able to obtain specifically fingerprints off of gift cards that were attempted to be purchased at a local store here. We were able to make an identification on one of the main suspects, which in conversation with the AG's office, it's a group that they believe is not just statewide hitting places in the state, but also in neighboring states. So it's a group of about 12. And the subject we were able to identify through that fingerprint on that gift card is the alleged ringleader. So they've assumed three of our cases and were working with us to try to connect the other cases that we had. Again, it is still an open investigation at this point in time. An arrest has not been made, but we have a suspect identified. And then lastly, the vehicle burglaries and stolen vehicles that we experienced on the weekend of May 6th through the 8th. This is also still an ongoing investigation. But we do have, through the video surveillance or video camera footage that one of the citizens took and fingerprints, we have a positive ID on a suspect for three of the stolen vehicles and five of the burglaries, and it's still ongoing in terms of locating and connecting the other cases. So I just want to provide an update on that, and that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Captain. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question, Captain, but more or less a comment. Last council meeting, I was very vocal in my anger and, I guess, I don't know how I want to say it, but my comments were, I got approached by some citizens in the last couple of weeks while grocery shopping and at the pharmacy, and they were like, "Man, we really like it when you tear down the sheriff's department." And those comments troubled me because, as most people know, that my whole career, my adult life, I've been in law enforcement. So I'll never speak ill of law enforcement. So it bothered me that my comments that I made were somehow, I guess, taken by some citizens to feel that I'm tearing down your department, or... And that's the farthest thing from the truth. My problem is with the contract and the spiraling cost of the contract and what you have nothing to do with. And the men and women that patrol the town have absolutely nothing to do with. That's way above everybody's pay scale here. So I want to clarify and give you my support that I try to always let you guys know how much I think the citizens and we all appreciate your job. I truly appreciate and have a love for law enforcement. And it bothered me that people possibly took my comments as a way of tearing down law enforcement. So I want to personally apologize to you and the men and the women at the department. If anybody thinks that was my intention, it wasn't my intention. My intention is to build you up, not bring you down. It was solely based on contracts and the way things have been going with the escalating costs of the contract. So I just wanted to clarify that in open forum.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Spelitch. And I mean it sincerely when I say no apology is necessary on that. I've had enough conversation with you that I understand that, that you support the men and women that are on the job doing the job, and that it is frustration with the contract, which I do understand. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Well said, Councilwoman Spelitch. And I'm prompted to say, as a result of his comments, that I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, that we support you. We support law enforcement in our town. And there's not enough of that going on in our nation, that our police officers are getting support. And as a result of that, we're seeing a lot of ramifications of that. So from my perspective, I want to say we are grateful for you and for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'd like to comment that the number of people and residents of the town of Fountain Hills that take the time to come up and say that is quite astonishing. There are a lot of folks that come up and take the time to thank deputies on the street, myself, or any of our police or fire service. I see them going up and saying thank you. And that means a lot, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Captain, great job. And I think it's fantastic, and the public needs to know how hard that your department has been working to solve these crimes in town. And to identify ringleaders that have been multi-state, and the work that you do and the resources that your department have are fantastic. So I just hope that it is written in bold in the news that Fountain Hills is not someplace you want to come and commit a crime because you're going to get caught. And our community is going to stand behind you and the officers that are here. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tolles. I appreciate that.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add real quick, at Noon Quanis Club a couple of weeks ago, we had two sergeants there give presentations. And I guess you were busy or whatever, but they said their show was better than yours anyway, so... But, no, they talked about, a lot about block watch and how they want to implement that out here and how it works, and gave a lot of good tips on fraud prevention and the smash-and-grab and just leaving your vehicle unlocked and that kind of thing. So I just want to pass that along, that the guys did just fine, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharnow. And for anybody in the community or groups that are out there, we're happy to come out and give those presentations. So obviously, we do it by request. So if there are groups that would like to have us come out, we're happy to accommodate those requests so long as we can.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for your reports. I've got to tell you, it's very enlightening to have you up in front of us and bringing us up to speed, and thank you for that. We've had a seriously hot topic of speeding on El Lago. And do you have any news or information that you could share with the public on this?
I don't have any updates at this time, other than the discussion in our agency is obviously increasing our traffic enforcement there. And starting this week, we have a couple of units that are coming out that are really going to target that area and some of the other... We get a lot of requests for speed enforcement, which is apparent because of the safety issues we have and, you know, the speeding issues in the town. So El Lago is definitely one of the hot topic areas. But there are a lot of intersections and a lot of requests for speed that we try to accommodate. So we have two, like I said, we have two units that are coming into... They're assigned now to Fountain Hills, who, you know, two guys aren't going to make the difference alone. But I believe we'll see a pretty big impact, traffic enforcement citations. And I know Councilmember Magazine doesn't like this, but even warnings. So... But we will continue to work on El Lago, speed enforcement, and continue to work with the town and the safety committee that we were put together for trying to reduce those speeds.
And if I can also add to that, too. Mrs. Parisi, who spoke the last council meeting, we have a meeting set up with her. We're going to listen to her, and we're also going to give her some ideas and suggestions on what we're going to try to do to help bring some recommendations to the council subcommittee on traffic enforcement and safety. And then we're going to also do a neighborhood meeting with her neighbors. But we wanted to talk to her first and then kind of get some input. And then we're going to try to get that set up in the near future. We do have some ideas on some traffic ideas that can help calm the traffic and the speeding in that area. So, but we want to definitely get the neighbors the buy-in to some of these ideas. So, but that is forthcoming. I believe our meeting with her is coming up another week or two.
Captain, thank you, and thank you, town manager.
Thank you, Captain. And about the... First of all, you're always so responsive, and all of your team is. And we really appreciate that. I kind of bug you a lot. So I think I can't tell you how much... And he always answers with facts and makes it really easy for me to respond to residents and constituents with their concerns. And one of which was the idea of what do you do if you come to the building? And, you know, you see that sign, and you may be in distress in some way and think somebody's here, and they may not be. So we're going to work on being able to communicate that. It's so that way people don't come here and think that there's somebody here all the time. And maybe we can just do that with signage. But really appreciate how far you already took that really preliminary discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Very good. Now, next we have a presentation from our McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. I think we have... Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Bill Myers. I am on the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission here in town. And I'll give you just a brief 10-minute summary of what's going on. Generally, you folks know what's going on because you've helped an awful lot of things happen, including getting 82 additional acres for the preserve recently. You and your predecessors getting a preserve that we have in town for quite a few millions of dollars. Getting the money to build a couple of trailheads and giving the go-ahead to build a trailhead. So we now have Darrell Canyon Trailhead that'll be open shortly. That's an acronym of ACT, a Darrell Canyon Trailhead. So when you hear people say, gee, it's up at the ACT, that's what they're talking about, Darrell Canyon. So thank you for all your work that you guys do. And you already have a pretty good update because you've got a great town staff. Grady Miller over there, I just want a couple of names, Kevin Snipes, Rachel Goodwin, and Justin Weldy. I hate to mention any names because I'm leaving out another 20. But you are quite fortunate to have some people working for you that are dedicated and knowledgeable and make a lot of things happen. So thank you. Toll Brothers is working on the Eagle Ridge Drive. I don't know if they're ahead of schedule or behind schedule or on schedule for the revised opening of September. But I can tell you, I've been up there at the end of the pavement, and there's either three, four, or five pieces of heavy equipment working up there every time I've been up there. So they're doing something. We hope to have that thing done September and all the utilities hooked up for the ACT. We'll see. Hopefully, it will. Okay, the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, every year, has objectives, stuff they try to get done. This year, we have about 35 of them. And no, don't roll your eyes. I'm not going to read them all off, but I'll just read a couple of them here. We get those things done because we have four work groups, and we divide those objectives up into the work groups to try to get things done. But I'm just going to rattle off a few of these in my time. And I won't explain them. I'll just rattle them off. Determine if first aid kits should be installed in the two trailheads. Determine if AED defibrillators should be installed in the two trailheads. Public knowledge of the campaign to let people know the ACT is there. We had a little bit of a public notification when we did the soft opening back in November 18th. But I think if we have a grand opening in November, perhaps, not knowing any of the times, but other local newspapers, other conservancies, other, just other groups, bicycle groups, hiking groups, we have a great asset, and they should know about it. Let me see. Add a fifth trail counter to the preserve. We have five trail counters up there. And what it is, is a little battery-operated light that goes across the trail, and every time you cross it, it blinks. So just to give you an idea of the usage of the trails is what this is for. I'm just going to give you two numbers. In March, at the Darrell Canyon Trailhead, we probably had a little over 8,300 people go there. In April, heat's starting to come. And for the five, we have one Botanical Gardens, one in Lake Overlook, and three in the preserve, we had about 8,600 people. So it's a good indication of usage for the trails. Rattle off a couple more. Better recognition of Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills. I'll talk about that in a moment. Quarterly updates of the, for the preserve and the Sonoran Conservancy and the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. Perhaps we can give you 10 minutes every quarter, something to that effect. Update directional signage. Our trails themselves have great directional signage on them. It's three miles to here and a lot of emergency markers, but we need some additional signs to get people up to the two trailheads. We're working on that. Value of the preserve. This is an important one and a hard one. Why do we have a preserve? What's its value? And so we'll be getting some better answers than we have right now. But generally, it's ambiance, value in 10s and 20s. If you have a real estate here in town, a home or apartment or store or something, that preserve actually adds value in 10s and 20s. We'll get more information on that. Health, education. It's really a great asset at a very low cost to the town compared to some other assets. The last one I'll rattle off is the, we hope to have the Lake Overlook, the Botanical Gardens, and perhaps even the islands in the lake under the auspices of the MMPC. Because, not to take it away from anybody, but just to have all of those kind of common things that are really trails and trailheads and maintaining all under one jurisdiction. Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills. We have about 100 members in that conservancy. There are three of the people on the commission that are on the conservancy board. I'm one of those. And we are active, quite active. I'll just give you a couple of things. We now have a, what do we call that? A host program. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday during busy times on high... Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday during busy times when hikers are there, and we, it's a safety thing, and just to let hikers know where the trails are, how to get there, and the safety. I'm fortunate enough to be one of those hosts, and when I see somebody coming up with flip-flops and no water, and it's already 90 degrees, we talk to them. We actually give them some water. Maybe we ought to give them some shoes, too. But as you know, we, our group designs, through Bill Craig mostly, builds and maintains all the trails here in town, guided hikes, other kinds of things, so I think that over the next year or two, there's going to be a lot more input and benefit from the Conservancy of Fountain Hills. Well, listen, my time is about up. I could talk, as you probably know, for an hour on this kind of thing. Let me, one more thing, and then I'll open it up for questions after already. We also have a thumb, I keep calling these thumbnails, thumb drive, that we give presentations to various groups, including the men's discussion group and other groups, people who say, what's the conservancy, what is the MMPC, where in the world is the preserve, that type of thing, so we'll be giving that even more probably over the next 12 months. Listen, I appreciate the opportunity. Are there any questions I could go far?
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, Councilman?
I had a question, just a comment. I've thanked you in the past, I want to thank you again, and Bill Craig and your four teams. For anybody who hasn't been up there, to take a look at what is done, it's just, it's unbelievable. I don't know how you do it. It's backbreaking work, and some of you are old.
Why do you look at me when you say that?
No, I really want to, I really want to thank you, it's tremendous what you do.
Well, on behalf of all of those people, I say thank you very much. It is really a labor of love. I call it blood, sweat, and tears.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. On that positive note, we have call to the public. Do we have any cards?
We do, and I'm not sure I'm going to read this name properly. Kane with Fountain Hills Unified School District, and I will let you pronounce your last name.
Jay.
Jay, okay.
All the other letters are silent.
Hi there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I was asked tonight to come share with you guys a little bit about some of the ideas that the Dark Sky community has been working on, and just share with you a little bit how the school, the high school especially, would be able to benefit and use a facility like that. So, for the last, probably about the last year, I've been working with the Dark Sky organization, and if you came to the big event this year, you saw our virtual reality machines on display, and our high school kids, they're working on that to try to share with the community what we're doing at the high school, and so I won't take a lot of your time, but I just wanted to share that, you know, I'm very excited about the possibility of us getting a, some kind of, you know, telescope or science center here in Fountain Hills. I see a lot of possibilities with it, especially with just our science department alone. We tried to do something like this a couple of years ago locally at the high school, and just, you know, funds are a little tight, and so we weren't able to get it off the ground, and that's when I kind of got connected with the Dark Sky community. I'm an avid star watcher, it's one of my favorite things about living in Fountain Hills, and I know that we can make some great connections, especially with our AP Capstone program. We're in year three of AP Capstone, we are first graduates graduate from the program this last graduation ceremony, and they are going to get diplomas not only from Fountain Hills High School, but also from the College Board, which is, it's really helped our enrollment, especially with students who are coming out of eighth grade looking at other high schools and other opportunities like IB and other honors programs, so we've been able to keep a lot of our own students, and actually have had some transfer in the other way, which has been very cool. But one thing I see with this is that they have to do a two-year study, and being able to do a two-year study in astronomy and being able to use a facility of this kind of magnitude would be pretty awesome for high school kids. I've also been connected with, through the Dark Sky community, some representatives from Arizona State, and I know they're working with them, so I see a possibility of having dual enrollment courses out here where our students would be able to take college-level courses that we currently can't offer to help them prepare for college. One of the things that with dual enrollment has changed is now you have to have a master's degree in that area, and finding teachers is hard enough, number one, but then finding them with a master's degree in a subject area is even harder to do, so being able to partner up with a university or a community college would be pretty amazing, so I see it in that regard, and then I also see the high school leading the way in working to give back to the younger grades, and we've talked a little bit about the high school kids being able to do field trips with the younger students, to be able to bring them over and show them how research is done, and capitalizing on some of the experts in the community that have moved here for the Dark Sky. So, I just wanted to come real quick and just say that if something like this were to come, that we would make the best of it, and we would jump all in, and I know I'd be down there a lot with my kids especially, taking a look at what we have to offer, so. Do you have any questions for me in regard to how the school would possibly use that?
Thank you, Kane, this is call to the public, but when we get to that item, we can talk if we have any questions.
I've never done this one before, just a school board meeting, so, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
We appreciate it, thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, Bob Shelstrom.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello, I'm Bob Shelstrom, I'm a resident of Fountain Hills, and at the last meeting, I was talking about division of responsibility, and for the police department and the town of Fountain Hills and county sheriff's office, and I think we indeed have some very good news here based on some research I've done with the help from Supervisor Chokri and Representative Kavanaugh. First of all, ARS 11441 clearly places all responsibility for county law enforcement on the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. They make no exclusions for unincorporated areas or any other towns, so they are by default the primary jurisdiction. However, there are provisions where if a town chooses to start its own police department, that becomes the primary jurisdiction, and the county office and county sheriff is only required to provide mutual aid and concurrent jurisdiction, which would include homicides, vehicular crimes, sexual assaults, and other items, and even, interestingly enough, in their own policies, they state in GB 1 that within the geographical boundaries of Maricopa County, as set forth in ARS 11109, the office has primary jurisdictional responsibility for law enforcement and other police-related services. Excluded from the sheriff's mandated areas of primary law enforcement responsibility are the incorporated cities and towns that maintain police departments, which I believe, if I'm correct, we do not maintain. Therefore, even if we didn't have an intergovernmental agreement, it would appear legally, we may be, they may be responsible to provide it anyway. Now, I'm not proposing we get away from the IGA, but I do think we have a pretty heavy hammer here to get to the fair costs of this. It appears that in District 7, we're funding all the staff. We are only supposed to be providing for the costs directly related to Fountain Hills. Taking a look at staffing, what they have on their website just matches up with what we're paying for according to worksheet A, so we have room for negotiation there. There's also the mutual aid agreement. They are responsible for mutual aid in those items that they provide that are not directly related for homicide and other groups, and there is no provision there for charge, and it appears from taking a look at worksheet A, there is quite a bit there, they're charging us that should have been provided under the mutual aid agreement. Now, after talking with a great deal of help from our police captain, it appears that we have not asked them to divide responsibilities and provide documentation for what they spend in District 7 for patrolling the unincorporated areas in Scottsdale, Rio Verde, Tonti Verde, and quite a few others. I think you need to divide that, it appears like they're giving us exactly that amount. Now, I want to know my time's up, but the Finance and Business Services Department is responsible to give backup for what they provide in worksheet A. I assume you have it, I filed for it, and believe me, there's going to be some close looking at it, and I would hope by you as well as me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? No? Okay, we'll move to our consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much. Next, we go to our regular agenda, and speaking of dark skies, that's our first item. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, last November, the town council approved the proposed Astro Science Discovery Center, now known as the Arizona Dark Sky Discovery Center, to be located in the Centennial Plaza area of the Fountain Hills Civic Center. When the council approved that decision, they also directed the project organizers to come back to the council at a later date to report back on the findings and recommendations from a feasibility study. I'm pleased to report that that has been completed, and with us tonight is Joe Bill, who's the president of the Astro Science Discovery Center Board, and he's going to come up to give a presentation on this, and then the council will be asked to take action on this item once again. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bill.
Thank you, Grady. Hello there.
As Grady mentioned, my name is Joe Bill, and I am a resident of Fountain Hills, and as Grady mentioned, president of a Arizona nonprofit corporation that is seeking to build a privately funded Dark Sky Discovery Center in Fountain Hills. So, I'm here today because we are requesting your support for a long-term lease of town property on the south side of Centennial Circle, contingent upon our successful fundraising effort, of course. But what I'd like to do tonight is to share with you some more information about what we are planning, so you get a better feel for what we have in mind, and I think by going through a brief PowerPoint presentation, I think you'll get a better picture of what we hope to achieve. I'd like to talk about three things tonight. First, why is this project a fit for Fountain Hills? Number two, what is this facility all about? How is it going to be used? And then lastly, exactly where we think it should be positioned. So I'm going to start with why Fountain Hills is a perfect fit, and that slide pretty much tells it all. As you all know, about a year and a half ago, we were designated as the world's 17th International Dark Sky Community. There's no other community in the valley that has that designation and probably won't get that anytime soon, so that is unique to Fountain Hills. And I think you know that we followed up that designation with a couple of festivals, and one of the nice things about that is it was an opportunity to work closely with all the entities around the Centennial Circle, the Community Garden, the River of Time Museum, the Astronomy Club, the library, the community center, et cetera. So those were two successful outings that demonstrated how we can work together collaboratively for a great event for Fountain Hills. We also installed signs at the entrances to our community, this is at the west entrance along Shea Boulevard, and this one is at the east entrance to designate that we are a Dark Sky community. Lastly, we did build a float for the Thanksgiving Day Parade. This was done in, actually, Vicki and Mark Dirksen's driveway, there was so much glitter left over in their driveway after Thanksgiving Day that you could actually see their driveway from outer space, not kidding. But I want to take a moment here just to at least acknowledge the people that have gotten us to this point, that have set the stage for the dream project that we're about to begin, because this has been a four-year effort, and some of those board members are here tonight. If you want to stand for just a second, it's Clayton Corey, Nancy Bill, Lisa Miller, Jay Schlum, and others, Jerry Butler, Ted Blank, we're going to acknowledge them as well as, did I miss somebody?
Tony.
Tony, yeah, Tony, well, I'm going to acknowledge him too separately, actually. Tony gets special consideration. Yeah, I'm going to get to those. But I just, I need to do that, because you need to know that those people have put in a lot of hours for this effort, and they have helped set the stage for what we're talking about tonight. So here's what we're talking about. We're talking about an Arizona Dark Sky Discovery Center. It started about a year ago, and we pulled together the major stakeholders in the community, and you can see that there were a number of representatives from the town council at that time, including Grady Miller, Kane, Dr. Jay is also involved, and also Jenny Willigrod, president of the FHCCA, Scott and Sharon from the Chamber of Commerce, and then the ones on the other side are representatives from the Dark Sky Association. We had a series of meetings, and our job was to identify, okay, what should this facility have? What would make it unique? What would attract people to Fountain Hills? And the end result of that was this. They said that we need to have, number one, an observatory, number two, an exhibit hall, number three, a planetarium, and number four, a tiered seating theater auditorium with about 150 seats. So that's what came out of that, and so from that, we decided, okay, that's a great idea. So when you have a great idea, you have to have a vision statement, so we did put together a vision statement, and that statement is, "To interpret the universe and distill it into an unparalleled experience, one that stirs the imagination, invites reflection, and cultivates a greater understanding of our planet and beyond." But then with a vision statement, you have to do one more thing, you have to have a mission statement. So here's the mission, is to offer astronomy-related education and research opportunities for students and people of all ages, and create a astrotourism attraction for the state of Arizona. Okay, so far, this has been easy, right? So now, where do we go? Okay, well, golly, now there's work to do, so what we did is we formed a board of directors specifically for this project that could set the stage for where we got to today, and I'd like to introduce them now, that includes now Tony Pistilli gets introduced, or no, not yet. They're coming up. Tony's going to get introduced three times tonight before this is over. But we've got Jerry Butler sitting back there, Jerry Butler's on our board, as you all know, Jerry's a community advocate, Walt Franklin also, as many of you know him, he couldn't be here tonight, Ted Blank is here, some of you know Alan Magazine, who's been supportive from day one, he's on our board, Nancy, my wife, is our CPA, makes sure we don't spend too much money, and myself. So, we have, we are going to be expanding that board now, okay, but right now, that's the board that set the stage that, you know, we got the bylaws, we got the corporation form, we filed for 501(c)(3), all that is now established. We also put up a website, which is up, and we came up with a concept design. So this is the concept design, and I'm just going to point out, you can probably see them, I have a pointer here, but the planetarium, the observatory, the auditorium theater, and the exhibit hall, and you can see in facilities like this, of course, well, and we have a classroom, but you have a lobby, you have a gift shop, you have offices, you have a vending machine area, et cetera. So this is basically the concept design that we are working with, and we're going to be developing further, of course. By the way, it's going to be about a 13,000 to 14,000 square foot facility is what it's estimated to be. Now, how's it going to be used? Okay, there's a long list of how it's going to be used, and I think the best way to maybe share with you and give you a picture in your mind as to how we are going to do this is to give you some visuals that support this. So, number one, the observatory. Okay, this actually is a picture of the Rancho Mirage Observatory, which Rancho Mirage is next to Palm Springs, and when some of us went to the Griffith Observatory in Los Angeles to see what they are doing, we had a behind-the-scenes tour by Mark Pine, the deputy director. He is one of our advisors. We have, by the way, three advisors at this time, Mark Pine, Griffith Observatory in Los Angeles, Dr. Jeffrey Hall, who's the director of the Lowell Observatory, and Kay Corbin, who is the chairman of the board of the Arizona Science Center. So we are in regular contact with them when we have difficult questions that need to be answered. In any case, Mark Pine, when we were at Griffith, he said, "You need to stop and see this new observatory in Rancho Mirage, it might be exactly what you're looking for." And so Ted Blank, our very own NASA Solar System Ambassador, did stop there, he took these pictures along with, this picture along with a number of others, and it turns out that this is almost exactly what we are going to try to create. This is a plane wave telescope with a 27 and 1/2 inch mirror, this is something that ASU will be very interested in. And also, I was going to just mention briefly here, astrophotography, this is the Rosette Nebula, this was taken by a hobbyist, Dennis Kaliznikoff, in his backyard in Fountain Hills with his telescope, and there are a number of astrophotographers in the Phoenix Valley that will love to get their hands and pay for time on the telescope that we are trying to develop. Planetarium, I think you've all been to planetarium shows, they certainly, there are a lot of them that are related to astronomy, but not necessarily. there are a lot of them that are related to astronomy, but not necessarily entirely. So, it doesn't have to be all astronomy. It can be science. And also, in a planetarium, you often have things like this, music laser, music and laser light shows, and certainly that's something that we would offer as well. Now, the exhibit area. What we envision are mostly interactive exhibits. It's a great way, it's a fun way to learn. Sure, there will be static exhibits, but we hope to create something like you're seeing here. We also will have virtual reality stations, and some of you maybe got to experience that at our second festival. There was a line throughout the evening for that experience. Presentations in the auditorium. And Ted Blank, who gives a lot of presentations in town already, will certainly be presenting in this auditorium, and the good thing about Ted giving the presentations is that every time he does, it's a TED Talk. So, we like that feature. But I also want to mention this. When you have a theater like this, we talked with Rick Alling, who is one of our ASU contacts. He's the director of the Marston Theater, and that's a beautiful auditorium, and he said, "If you create something like this," he said, "You are going to be surprised at the things that come out of the woodwork that want to rent that facility for this, that, or the other thing." Everything from old classic movies, there's a movie group wants to rent it, they have somebody who was involved in producing the movie, come and present, they show the movie. So, if you have a high-tech, state-of-the-art auditorium that can do that kind of thing, he said, "You're going to get, you are going to get We have a classroom, and we have people who are and have moved to Fountain Hills just because of our dark skies. Just recently, a couple of astrophysicists moved to town, recently retired from the Goddard Space Flight Center. They want to teach. They know so much about what they've done, from mission control to plotting orbits for the spacecraft past the outer planets, occultation technology, et cetera. So, they are so supportive of what we are trying to create here. Student tours. Now, the Music Instrument Museum gets about 375,000 visitors a year. We are not at that scale, believe me, but they get 100,000 students coming every year on buses, and there is no doubt that we are going to have buses of students coming to our facility to see what we have created. The science students from throughout the valley, I think, are going to be interested in this. Astronomy camps. Okay, Flagstaff has astronomy camps, Tucson has astronomy camps, Phoenix has none, and we're the largest metropolitan area. So, we are convinced that those astronomy camps that we will offer in the summer are going to be filled to capacity every time. Events. When you have a facility like this, it's always fun sometimes to have special events. The facility gets rented for corporate functions, private parties, small weddings, and certainly that's something that we will plan for. I want to talk briefly about natrotourism. This is recently from the New York Times, talking about how natrotourism is growing worldwide, and if you just Google natrotourism, you'll find examples all over the world. So, and there are examples like this. What's happening in New Zealand, Australia, and so on. It also, when you get into natrotourism, it includes laser tours of the night sky, and we did that actually at each of our festivals. Ted Blank and Dr. Jeffrey Hall from the Lowell Observatory kind of took turns doing that, and there was always a crowd around them as they kind of pointed out the objects in the sky. Hotels are getting into this, and a lot of hotels now are having telescopes in a central area, and they bring in an astronomer to talk about what they're seeing in the sky. Restaurants are getting into this with astro-themed food and drinks. Even in Arizona, there are some. Starry night margaritas, galaxy desserts, et cetera, et cetera. So, when I talk about natrotourism, it sounds like, well, yeah, that might happen in Fountain Hills someday. Maybe it's going to be a long time down the road or whatever. Well, okay. We happened to meet the management team for Copperwind, and when we talked about what we are doing, they said, "You know what? Let's get started." I mean, we haven't even gotten out of the starting blocks, and they already put together a program. It's called the Stargazing Dinner Series on Wednesday evenings, and it includes presentations by astronomers. In fact, I like this slide the best, because I have to point out something here. Okay, right down here, if you can read it, it says, "The Star Dudes," okay? All right. Now, this is when I get to introduce Tony. Okay, so, so, we've got three star dudes in the audience tonight, Tony Pistilli, Scott Adams, who is right next to him, stand up for a second, and Ted Blank, Ted Blank, our Solar System Ambassador. Those three are the star dudes, and let me tell you, they are great at what they do. So, I've been helping them a little bit, and so I can't keep up with them. They have the big scopes. They know everything that's up there. So, we've got three star dudes and one star dud. So, that's me. So, hopefully someday I get promoted from dud to dude if I keep working at it. Anyway, so that's underway with Copperwind, and we're very excited about working with them, and we see that program growing. So, bottom line is that we see the Arizona Dark Sky Discovery Center, located in Fountain Hills, will further the development of natrotourism in the astronomy state of Arizona. This is a statement from Scott, the CEO of the Chamber, and Scott basically has a statement here. He has been involved with meetings and indicated how this facility is going to be a real asset for not only Fountain Hills, but for the metro area in the state of Arizona. So, the Chamber is very supportive. Education relationships. We are developing a relationship with ASU. Michael Crowe, who is the president of ASU, this project has been presented to him, so he knows what this is about. We have contact with, regular contact with three professors in the School of Earth Sciences and Exploration. They are very tuned in to what we're doing and very interested in what we are doing. Nothing concrete has been developed, because we don't have any concrete developed yet, but they are interested and they want to be involved with us. The community colleges, we haven't reached out to them yet. We will at the right time. The area high schools, we will certainly reach out to them as well. You heard Kane talk earlier about how important this is to the Fountain Hills High School. We want to do everything we can to keep the Fountain Hills students in our school system, and we think this will actually help. So, this is a statement from Kane, Dr. Jay, who was here earlier. Basically, I already said it, that it's a competitive environment, and we're going to try to help them. The ASU feasibility study, which is in your packet, they did a great job. It's a great source of information for us, and they pointed out some key findings. They mentioned some multiple partnership opportunities that we hadn't thought of. They also mentioned about an astro art gallery. You saw that one example of astrophotography, and they feel that with all the astrophotography in Arizona, there are people that will want to have their work displayed in our facility, maybe on a consignment basis or whatever. So, it'd be a great way to fill the walls with some of that kind of thing. They estimated about 20,000 paying visitors per year in four full-time positions, a director and coordinators for education, marketing, and volunteer coordinator. One of the important points here is integrated marketing, and this goes back to how we work together with the other entities around the Centennial Circle for our festivals. Right now, Fountain Hills has busloads of people going to maybe the Herd Museum, or to the Mesa Arts Center, or to the Music Instrument Museum. We want to turn some of those buses around, okay? So, we want to have a program where people will actually maybe get on a bus and come to Fountain Hills, and here's how we think we can do it. First of all, the Dark Sky Discovery Center in and of itself will be an attraction, but picture a marketing piece where somebody's reading about, "If you come here, you not only get to see that, but you get to see one of the finest community gardens in the entire Southwest. You get to see and visit the River of Time Museum to learn about the Lower Verde River Valley history, and you get to see some fine sculptures in Centennial Circle." And if you package that properly and present that to potential audiences, there are going to be a lot of people that will either drive here, or get on a van, or get on a bus, and come to Fountain Hills for this. So, we believe strongly that this could be marketed properly. And part of integrated marketing, by the way, is, you know, in cooperation with the Town of Fountain Hills Tourism, also with the Chamber of Commerce, who wants to be involved. Fort McDowell found out about what we're doing. They want to get involved. They're ready. We're not ready. They're ready. Copperwind, you already saw me talk about that, and we're very happy to see Bill and Sarah here tonight representing Copperwind, and the local restaurants, we feel, will get involved as well. So, that's it for the facility, kind of how we envision using it. And so, lastly, I just want to share with you now where we would like to have it positioned. This is the northwest area of the Community Garden. You can see the museum here, point of reference, Centennial Circle, right here, and this is where we are requesting the long-term lease, should we get the funding. Now, I have to say that to get to this point required a lot of work, months of work, because it involved a reconfiguration of the garden, and there are two people here tonight that deserve really special recognition for the hundreds of hours that they have put into that. And those two people are Jerry Butler on our board. There's Jerry sitting there being very modest, right there, and in the last row, Rita, raise your hand. Rita Applegate, representing the Community Garden, she's on their board and one of the garden managers. Those two, and I'm not kidding, they put in hundreds of hours to reconfigure the garden in such a way that we've ended up calling it, excuse me, calling it Garden 2.0, because it's an improvement in a number of ways that gives them access to areas that they don't have access to now, the opportunity for more beds. We've, by the way, we have offered to pay the entire cost of the reconfiguration. It's just as part of our fundraising effort that we promised that. We also offered access to a restroom that they've always wanted to have access to. So, we see this as a win-win. We see this as an opportunity for us to work together in the future, should we be successful, and we look forward to doing that. So, tonight, basically, we're just asking for your support for this project, support for a long-term lease if we get the funding. So, with that, I will open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, Councilman?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So, question number one, how are the grants looking? Are you finding people that are interested in participating?
We have not started the fundraising. We have started some, we've got some, well, let me explain how this is going to work, because this is an important message that we're going to be presenting throughout Fountain Hills. We are depending on Fountain Hills to help us, and the way you can work this through is people know people, and in order to get a meeting with the right people, you have to get that door opened. And the way to get that door opened is if we would happen to know somebody in Fountain Hills who can help us open that door, okay? We already know of some people in Fountain Hills who can open some big doors for us, and if we can meet enough people, even if it's a dozen people, I've, we've talked to three professional fundraisers. They all have said, "You have the most important thing. You have an inspiring project, and if you get in front of those kinds of individuals, you will find the money." So, the key is, Dennis, we are going to need the help of every person in Fountain Hills who has a connection that can open a door for us. We can do the rest.
Question number two, Mayor, if I may.
Of course.
You're serious. You have Rita Applegate totally satisfied?
Well, she gave me a hug tonight.
Well, that's a big step forward. And I had the pleasure of working with Rita, as while I'm teasing her just a little bit. It was a real pleasure. I have to agree. And then, the final question, I understand that you're working on some renderings and some actual presentations of the appearance of the building. How are those coming?
They are in process. Greg Zimmerman, whom some of you know, Dennis knows well, we are very excited to be working with him, and he is in the process of developing elevations and renderings. That's an important part of this process, and they will be done in August. Certainly, we will be happy to share those with the council at the right time, and when we present to donors, potential donors, I should say, that's one of the things you want to walk in with is a rendering of what you're trying to create. So, that's in process.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Councilman?
When we vote, I will be accusing myself, since I'm a member of the board, but councilors told me that I couldn't make a comment or two. I think this is potentially, taking nothing away from our fountain, this is potentially the most exciting thing that has ever happened to Fountain Hills, if we can pull this off. And I want to point out that the name of this is the Arizona Dark Skies Discovery Center, not Fountain Hills. We think we can attract people from the entire region. I think that will be critical to our success. And I want to, I want to say that we have made a lot of progress in a short period of time, and I want to thank Joe and Nancy for their leadership, because without it, we would not be close to where we are.
Take time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question on the long-term lease. Are we looking at the typical $1 a year type arrangement, or?
Yes, but just to let you know, too, so, this is a multi-year approach to this project. So, what they're going to do is they're going to come back at some point with the renderings, architectural appearance, and council will get some insight and be able to, you know, basically give some direction on that. So, the final stage, obviously, before this action tonight, or I should say, after this action tonight, will be at some point coming forth with a lease that will come back to council.
Because I'd like to at least see $5 a year and make Mr. Bill personally responsible for the other four, but...
Is that a motion? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really exciting. I agree with Councilman Magazine. I think this is something that we would love to see in Fountain Hills. It'll drive tourism, which is what we need, in my opinion, desperately, is to get something to bring people to Fountain Hills and activate this downtown, which I think this will really help. There's a line item, that there's a blank in your capital costs, and I was hoping that maybe we can convince your committee and board to add a line item that says parking garage, and that we can work with the community center parking facility and build something that can support something as huge as this idea is. If you're going to bring the people, you have to know where you're going to park them, and this has been an issue and a challenge with a lot of people in our community, that they're concerned with the traffic. What happens when you build it and they do come? Where do you put them? And I think we need to talk about that.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? Oh, just... First is Bill Hines. Hi.
Hi there. Bill Hines with Copperwind, and I am a resident of Fountain Hills. As many of you know, we are making a substantial investment in the community with the expansion of Copperwind and the conversion of it over to a Marriott Autograph Collection Resort. We're very, very excited about that. Construction's underway, but what a lot of people don't know is to qualify as an autograph collection property with Marriott, you have to distinguish yourself from every other property that exists in their system. You have to be exactly like nothing else. And you start that process with a very complex and comprehensive branding exercise, and we brought in an international branding guy, and the two things he picked out that he felt really would distinguish our property from many others is he looked to the two biggest assets we have around us, and it was the desert, and it was the sky. And the whole concept is, we are the place in between. And so, we have spent a tremendous amount of time and energy focused on helping the trails, doing whatever we can to build our own trails, and we think that's going to be huge. But the other side of that is taking advantage of this unbelievably dark sky that we do have. We're 25 to 28 minutes from the airport. I might tell people 20, depending on who I'm talking to, which is unbelievable. We're 30 minutes from the heart of Scottsdale, but when you pass and you get up to about Palisades on Shea, the McDowell Mountains do an unbelievable job of giving us a pristine sky and a pristine desert. And I know I feel it when I drive up over the hill. It's really incredible, and people feel that. So, when we had the opportunity to get involved with the dark sky, we did jump at it, and the first thing we found out was the quality of the people make the organization, and they're the finest people in town. So, yeah, we're behind it 100% selfishly and for the community, so.
Thank you. Councilman?
Just a comment I wanted to make that I forgot, and people may laugh when I say this, but I'm serious. If anybody wants the naming rights for this facility, or knows anybody who would like to have their name on the building or inside one of the facilities... to have their name on the building or inside one of the facilities, please let Joe know. We have to raise money. And there are a lot of people in this town and in this region who have money. We're not talking 10s and 20s here, folks. We're talking a lot of money. So if you know anybody who might be inclined to work with us and have the naming rights, please let Joe know.
Thank you. More speaker cards?
Yes, Rita Applegate.
Nice to see everybody tonight. I mainly want to say thank you to Joe Bill and Nancy Bill for reaching out to me personally, because they know how passionate I am about the community garden. I've worked very hard creating something that I feel is a big success in town, too. But being able to be partner with something to this degree and magnitude, I can't thank them enough. And for offering to fund the relocation, allow me to be a part of it, and working with Jerry is always a pleasure. But it's important to me to say thank you for the consideration that everybody's already done in town, and just thank this group.
Thank you, Rita. Jay Schlum?
Hey, Mayor, how you doing?
Hey, council, mayor, staff, thanks for considering this. People have lifted up Joe Bill, but many do not know Joe Bill was on our first town council.
That's right.
If we forget that. He's somewhat, yeah, I think it was 1912? And I think Joe and his wife Nancy are great representatives of our town, and great example of those people that come here, love the town, and just don't let go of it. In their retirement, they continue to trail blaze and do all these amazing things that we all get to benefit from. And thank you very much to you guys and to the board. The Arizona Dark Sky Discovery Center in Fountain Hills, that's pretty exciting opportunity. It's, as was mentioned, it's not the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Discovery Center. We are uniquely located, as many of you have learned through the dark sky work that was done, to gain the endorsement from the international organization. We're the only community that's in a metropolitan area. We're, what, 20, 18 minutes from the airport? So we are so easy to get to, as we're all learning, as the communities continue to build out, and the valley continues to get brighter. We're fortunate to have the McDowell Mountains and other things around us, and our ordinance that helps to keep our community dark as well. I'll speak more about the real estate impact, being active in real estate here, but I'm really also excited about the more activities in our downtown, the energy that can bring to our downtown. Obviously, our community center and other things are really busy during the day. This is obviously going to be busier in the evening, and we like that activity downtown as well. And a public-private partnership, I mean, they, these are great opportunities. We, as a town, as you guys know, don't have a lot to offer. We can't give cash to people, but we happen to have some land that could be put to higher and better use. So what a great opportunity here in our downtown. Now, for the real estate impact that dark skies have already brought, I've had clients myself, the one that won that photo contest, moved here from Awatuki, where he thought it'd be dark enough to do his hobby of enjoying the dark sky. He enjoys now work, a shorter drive to work from Fountain Hills to his work in the valley from where he lived before, in the greatest cul-de-sac in the world, Awatuki. And other places are obviously further away and worse commute, but he also gets the benefit of the dark skies and a great place for he and his wife to raise their family. You heard there are other folks that have moved here, and there will be many more. So dark skies is no joke, it's, Fountain Hills obviously attracts people that love the nature of our community, the peace, the quiet, the hiking, all the outdoor activities that we uniquely have here in Fountain Hills. But also, they like to look up and see our dark skies as well. So we're going to have more and more opportunities for more families and professionals to move here, and I'm really excited about our partnership potentially with organizations, educational organizations like ASU and others. So I'm really excited for this, and I'll do what I can to support, and I appreciate your support as well.
Thank you, Jay. Any others?
I have a card from Rose, but I, okay, I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak or written comment.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, I'll pronounce it.
Hi.
Rose Goncelin.
Goncelin.
So I've been a resident since 2002, and I actually think this is the most exciting thing that's happened to Fountain Hills. But I also spent a career in watching failed construction projects. So I'd like to offer three suggestions to the town council. One is that you require that the funding be fully in place, not in bank loans, not in donor commitments, but actually be in a restricted account. That way, it ensures that the project will be completed. Secondly, you need to make sure that the plans, specs, and drawings are fully developed. Fast-track projects fail faster than any other ones. So you don't want to go in with a 30, 60, 70% complete plan. You need to have it all detailed out. And the last thing is, Jay introduced the concept of public-private partnerships. This is actually public land, and when a contractor engages in a construction project on public land, normally, or always, they require a performance and payment bond. That protects the owner of the project so that the construction project gets built according to specifications. And it also protects the subcontractors, suppliers, and laborers. And the town can require a performance and payment bond and have itself added as a obligee or beneficiary under the bond, in the event that anything ever happened to the 501(c)(3) organization, you would be able to step in and ensure that the project is completed. Because the biggest risk is having a half-finished building that can't be used for anything else. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, sir?
Thank you for that, and I think it's fair to say that the entire board agrees with everything you said. We will not be turning a shovel full of dirt until the architectural plans are finalized and that we've raised every penny that we need for the facility. We share your concern, the town certainly doesn't need a white elephant. We don't want to get partway into it and say, we can't finish it. So we're going to be very careful about that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that was excellent, and your recommendations are spot-on. And I'd like to see if there's a way that her recommendations are put in writing for us and added to whatever potential motion moves forward as we move forward to potentially approve a project like this in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're so grateful for the cooperative nature of this project and everybody coming together like this. It is very exciting indeed. At this point, with that motion, that's not the motion for tonight, though, correct? Vice Mayor? You're talking about, like, when we get deeper into it?
That is correct.
Okay, so if anybody, if there is no further dis... Oh.
I just wanted to mention, I did have two cards from individuals that supported it.
Oh, great.
They did not wish to speak, but they do support it.
Thank you, Liz. So I think we're ready for a motion, if everybody's okay with that? Someone like to make one?
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and read it all, since it's so long and formal, and seems that's how that committee operates. So, move to approve the use of the northwest area of the community garden near the Centennial Plaza for the proposed Arizona Dark Sky Discovery Center, and that the Astro Science Discovery Center Board of Directors present the proposed architectural designs and progress on its Capitol Campaign to the town council at a later date.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You are going to recuse, so, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Six to nothing, then. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming. We look forward to hearing about your future plans. Our next item is not as exciting. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the previous two items at the special meetings you had tonight had to do with the tax levies for our special districts. This one before you is for the general government for the town. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our finance director, David Pock, who's going to just briefly make some remarks about a one-page slide.
You're right, it is not as exciting as...
Well, we're happy to see you.
I think I didn't get that far enough in the course catalog. I should have, you know, made it to accounting, but not to astronomy. Anyway. All right, so this is, tonight is one of the final steps to prepare for next year. The adoption of the tax levy. The tax levy is calculated kind of backwards. We receive the full cash value of property located within Fountain Hills from the county assessor. We know what our tax, or, sorry, our debt service payment is going to be for the following year, so we basically just take those two and come up with the tax levy. Next year's levy is calculated to be .3382 dollars per $100 of net assessed value. And how that would affect a house with a limited property value of $300,000. You would take that limited property value, multiply it by the assessment rate, which is for primary residents 10%, that gives you a net assessed value of $30,000. Divide that by 100, which, that's just because the tax levies per $100 of net assessed value. You get $300. Multiply that by the rate, and you get $101.46 per $300,000 LPV.
Thank you.
And that is it.
Thank you. So the rate went down by about 10 cents?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Thank you. Can we get a motion? Are there any speaker cards?
No.
Okay. A motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-25.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pass, seven-nothing. Thank you. Our next item is about Verizon Wireless Extension. Brady?
Yes, I'm going to call upon senior planner Marissa Moore, who has basically a brief presentation on this item.
Hi.
The request before you is for a second six-month extension for a Verizon Wireless, actually three Verizon Wireless facilities on the roof of Park Place, not the building immediately adjacent to us, but the second building down. Their original request was made, there were two requirements they had to meet that they didn't, which required a special use permit. First being the three facilities, one of them exceeded the maximum building height by three feet 11 inches. The other one is that it was within 300 feet of residentially zoned property, because it literally is on top of residence. The original approval was given in June of 2018. They requested the first extension in December, and council approved that. Just a little reminder of where it's located. Town hall is over here, here's the first building, and then the three facilities would be located on those three corners. So staff recommends that council approve the second six-month extension for the special use permit.
Thank you, Marissa. Any questions? Yes, councilman?
Any idea if they're really going to move forward with this? Have they given us a date when it might be completed?
Right, so when I spoke with their representative, he said that they're having some issues, I guess, with engineering, the cases that would go around, the walls that would go around these facilities that are part of the approval to help, I guess, mask the view of these towers on top of the building. That's what I was told. And the applicant is not here tonight to further explain.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have speaker cards? Do you have a motion? Please?
Move to approve the six-month extension.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, Marissa. Next is, yep, Justin, I see you stepping up, it's about a, about a roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, the item before you is basically a cooperative purchasing agreement with IMS. This is the company that helps us with our pavement management program. They were the ones that initially collected the data on our conditions of our streets, and then also, they're the ones that, as we do street improvements, they go ahead and put that information into their system. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Weldy, our Public Works Director, who will go into a little bit more detail as to what this particular agreement is going to detail.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a long-term relationship. We've been working with this group. They gathered our pavement analysis, provided that information. We utilized that information to do the work completed this year that was approved as part of a contract with this group. There are several components to this. One of them is they host our data in their software system, because we simply, at this time, do not have the staff and the necessary time available to do all of the analysis and come back to the mayor and council with a recommendation of what roads we can save with the money we have and repave them. So part of this contract will be to renew our agreement with them to host the Lucidity software, which contains all of the data on it. While it is the property of the town, they host it, and we have access to it, and they also provide mapping and data and segments and supersegments and project. Another component of this is they are going to work with the town staff, the manager, and some well-educated and qualified volunteers, and help us come up with a future, long-term pavement management program. Included in that, we will come back to the mayor and council with some findings and some recommendations that will include future bonding where necessary, and also ask for input back from the mayor and council on what level of service we want to provide from the data that we have available and the information provided. By establishing the level of service for each of the criteria of an arterial, a major collector, minor collector, and local street, then that will help us better serve and better establish the amount of funding necessary for maintenance and reconstruction. That's basically what this does. I am certainly available to answer any questions, should you have any related to this amendment.
Thank you. Yes, councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll direct this to town manager, if I may. The last time we talked about this, I asked for a plan.
Yes, and this is getting you to your plan.
And this is getting me to my plan.
This is getting you a 10-year pavement management plan. Is that what you had in mind?
Well, that'd be nice to have. We've talked about it now for 10 years, so...
I can't say I've been here for 10 years.
That's right. You haven't.
But no, this is, this is what they're going to do. So, Justin said, and I'll just say it in a different way, so, what we're planning on doing is trying to have a workshop with the council and the consultant to come in, and have you help determine what the PCI, which is the condition of the roads, will be for each of those, arterials, major collectors, collectors, and local streets. And then, they're going to be able to take that with the data that they have about our streets, run those numbers, and then we'll come back, probably about two months later, and come back to a council workshop with a 10-year master plan that's proposed. And then also, give you a chance to look at funding options, because what I'm hoping to do is out of this, we can come up with a package that we can refer to voters the following year, that we can address some of our pavement needs that we're not able to currently afford. So does that sound like what we're getting you closer to?
Well, I mean, yes, it does. Certainly it does. But my question then would be, do we want to approve this now or after we hear the presentation from the experts?
This is what's paying the experts to do the work.
That's why we would always like to do business, let's pay them first.
Yes, councilman?
We all know roads and road conditions are one of the top priorities of our citizens. And I want to make a suggestion, and that is that we at least consider advertising a presentation at the community center that lays out the plan, the costs, and so on. So people that are really interested can come in and see it... So people that are really interested can come in and see it and ask questions. You may not have more than three people show up, but nevertheless, it's an opportunity.
I think that's an excellent idea. In fact, as you know, for the last couple years, we've been moving more and more towards having more citizen involvement, engagement, and absolutely. I think at this point, though, we're talking about a work session, and then maybe, once that's done, we'll go ahead and have the public be able to see that, and we'll have open houses. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Councilman Spelch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We all know that I just love spending money on studies and things like this. 44 grand now. What's next year? The year after? I mean, is it going to be 44 now? And what are we predicting it's going to be next year for the update, basically?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Spelch, so this right here is to help us develop a long-term plan. What, the known number that we know for next year is $6,000, because it costs $6,000 annually for them to maintain our software. Excuse me. In the future, not next year, but in the future coming forward, we will indeed, based on our approach and the plan moving forward, ask them to do a second analysis. That second analysis will include data for deflection testing that we did not do with this one. A short explanation of deflection testing is they drop a big ball on the pavement, and they register the data that comes back from the vibration and the density, and that gives us a better understanding of what type of base material we have under the roads. The town did not actually construct post incorporation. Next year, $6,000. The future, unknown at this time, based on the fact that we don't know all of our needs. But yes, if we intend to keep moving forward, there is going to be a cost associated with gathering, hosting, and utilizing the data.
Is there eventually, will there come a time in which we'll have so much information that you're, not you personally, but the town itself will be able to handle its own database and do its own?
If I may, Councilmember Spelch, I mean, it's a good question. It's a fair question. I will tell you that all the Valley cities have staff on board to be able to do this. We, at a very small department, as you're aware and you've visited, we don't have the staff that can actually do that. And so, at $6,000 a year to actually maintain the database and then do the data input for the work that we do each year on our streets and the maintenance, I think it's a pretty good value for what we pay. Obviously, if we were to add a staff person, you're looking obviously a lot more than a $6,000 cost a year. So I think it's good value for what we spend, and then when we have these occasions where we need to have additional work done, I think it's still very good value. I understand the philosophical difference you have on, perhaps, spending money on the outside when we could do it inside ourselves. Totally understand that. But we're just not staffed up or have the resources at this time to do that.
So I have your promise, you're not going to ask for 44 next year?
I, you have my promise at this point, yes.
I'll remember that.
Councilwoman?
Quick question. So the fiscal impact is 44.5, then it also has 114,495. What is that figure? Is it a projection for the future?
That's what we've, we've already spent some money with this firm already. This is a contract amendment, correct, Justin? So you want to explain that a little bit?
That is correct. So what we're asking to spend right now is $44,500 for all of the items that are listed in the disciplines. Accumitatively, the contract will bring it to $114,495 for the multiple years that we've already used it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, I feel like you're extremely intelligent, and I feel like you also have done as good a job, if not better, than any of the street superintendent's management teams that we've had since I've been in Fountain Hills.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, five, six years. And I, and I really mean that. I mean, we have our differences, and that's okay, but I really honestly mean that to you.
Thank you.
Now, I have to ask you, do we really need to spend the money with having someone as talented, as knowledgeable as you are? And that's, I mean that from the bottom of my heart. This is not a joke.
Councilmember Magazine, the funding we need for the analysis...
You just insulted him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Brown.
I was all worse than that before breakfast.
Councilmember Brown, the money we're asking, the permission to spend tonight, is to help us prepare a complicated bond process and long-term. Currently, myself and Mr. Pierce, we are taxed to the limit on what we can do. While we appreciate the fact that you recognize that we're doing a good job, and we certainly have the ability, there is no way that we could get all of the necessary information to the mayor and council in time to make a decision within 18, 19 months if we had to do it ourselves.
So I think the key, the key to that statement is, it's not so much about the roads themselves, but it's about the preparation of the presentation for a future bond.
Correct. They have the expertise in preparing the necessary documents and providing the data and analysis just for this.
Well, and it's also, if I may, I'm sorry for interrupting, Councilmember, but it's also coming up with a 10-year plan. I mean, to the best of my knowledge, we've never had a, anything that's really gone beyond maybe five or six years.
Three months.
Three months, well. And some of the, some of the things that we hear from citizens all the time is they want to know, like, when are you going to get to my street? Or when, when is our neighborhood going to get done? And I think a 10-year plan really helps us plan for that, not only to know, but also to try to figure out how we're going to be able to fund and get to those streets. And I think that's what we're not really maybe communicating as well tonight, is this is going to help us identify what the cost will be and how we're going to be able to hopefully fund some of those street projects.
Thank you. That's a great explanation.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I think it's also going to help us, I think it's already been stated, help us determine, make a decision on where we want those streets to be in terms of their condition. So, yeah, it's 44,000, but it's, it's going to allow us to reach a decision that we probably haven't been able to reach before with all the information, so, so that's good. And then, what's, what's the timetable on these workshops or presentations, do you think, in terms of coming back?
Well, if we did anything, for instance, if the council decided to refer something to the voters in 2020, it would be in November. But I think what I'd like to do is probably plan on having this at least come back to the council by December, and then we'll have to probably have the spring to try to work on having this refined, because there may be something in December that you may want us to come back to and further refine. So I would say probably the spring is probably when we'd be doing the public outreach to the community.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Bob Shelstrom.
Hello, I'm Bob Shelstrom from Fountain Hills. Whenever you look at a project like this, you take a look at its proportionality to other things that were done. Take a look, remember, a year ago last April, we got a report that did a 10-year plan that looked at degradation, and looked at everything I'm seeing scoped here. Now that, including having surveyed all of our 1,200 miles of streets and classified each one of them, cost $69,000. Proportionately, are you telling me that this is two-thirds as much as what they did there? I don't think so. Couple of things come up that I see here. As far as the lucidity input, that's not outlandish for $6,000 a year, including any kind of licensing fees, although I don't know what the cost is for it. But that's approximately 60 engineer hour time, and unless there's a lot of changes to that report and update, like for construction we do, it's borderline, but not terrible. Taking a look at the other issues, the problem was, I believe, we really didn't give good direction to IMS the first time around. Before they started, we should have had the criteria for what PCI we want for arterial, collector, and local roads, what the minimum should have been that we will find acceptable, and getting a range of it, so we could compare costs versus what we can do as far as quality of roads. That should have been all part of that, but we never got the direction from the council. Hopefully, that will be taken care of in this report. Also, there's a few things here that just kind of stuck out like sore thumbs. $6,000 for two presentations to the council. Basically, what they're going to do is they're going to have a PowerPoint presentation of the report, and they're going to be charging at least 30 engineering hours for each presentation. That's $6,000 out of the 44. That's pretty extreme. I wonder, looking at it, how many other of those cases are really kind of fattened up beyond what we need. So I think we really got to take a look at this. Crunch the numbers. I know it's not a lot in a $32 million budget overall, but if you take care of the dollars, the hundreds of dollars take care of themselves a lot of the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other cards? Any other questions or discussions? Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve purchase agreement, see 2018-077, for $44,500.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Unanimously. Thank you. Next, we go to 8E, which is a purchase agreement. Grady?
Yes, I'm going to just go ahead and turn this over, but I'm kind of excited. We're moving very quickly on these LED signs we've talked about at the stop sign intersections. So, Mr. Woldy, you want to kind of explain what this is for?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an amendment to an existing contract we have with some renewals in it. The bulk of this contract for tonight's approval will actually encompass the purchasing of the LED stop signs that Street Superintendent Jeff Pierce presented to the mayor and council most recently. That will actually, we intend to receive those signs, and we've been given a guarantee by this vendor, to have those here by the end of June. Right after we receive those illuminated stop signs, town staff will begin to install them. We anticipate that we should have all of the signs and the hardware installed probably in about 120 days, maybe a little bit longer, depending on the heat and the complexity once we get started. That is directly tied to a recommendation that came from the pedestrian safety committee to the mayor and council, and we are now implementing that. The second part of that, the remaining balance is split between streets and community services and our CAD GIS operator. You most recently heard at tonight's presentation that the MMPC is working to make improvements to their signs leading up to the two trailheads. That is where our CAD GIS operator is involved. He helps with the design. We do the ordering, and then the town staff, including development, not development services, but community services, we install their signs for them. And also, the MMPC installs signs on the trails and other guidance signs in the trails. This will also include renewals over the next two years. The renewals will not include this relatively large number of $79,000 for the one-time purchase. The street department is approximately $30,000. Community services and the GIS combined is approximately $10,000. And we think that that is adequate, based on our past purchasing. If you have any questions, I will certainly be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Speaker cards? No? I think you're off the hook here. So anybody want to make a motion, please? Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
Item 8F, a consultant for flight paths. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a request for council consideration to direct the manager to secure the services of a lobbying firm. As you're aware, the mayor at the June 4th council meeting made the public and the council aware that City of Scottsdale's been working very diligently with their residents and neighborhoods to try to get the FAA to make some changes to the flight paths that serve Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. And unfortunately, there were, out of the three flight paths that were being considered, there was one that was a direct impact to the town over the Fort McDowell Tribal Community and the town of Fountain Hills. There was one that was not very clear. It looked like it could possibly impact one area of the town. So this is really, this is a really high-stakes game here. We're talking about, you know, major impacts from noise and air pollution and other impacts that we've not had to deal with. The last time we dealt with this particular issue was about five years ago, and City of Phoenix was going through the motions of making changes to their flight paths. And if it hadn't been for Senator McCain at the time, who, through influence and being able to lobby him, we would have probably had that flight path running right through our community. And that was about 2014. So I think what's really essential is for us to have a really good scope of services, make sure that we're getting value for what we're paying. Basically, what I'm suggesting is that we'd have a lobbying firm research and stay on top of the proposed changes to the Phoenix Sky Harbor flight paths. The firm would also develop strategies that protect the town's interest. Individual from the firm would represent and communicate the town's position before the FAA, City of Phoenix Airport Authority, members of Congress, and other entities on flight paths that negatively impact Fountain Hills, and recommend alternatives, and then provide regular written status reports to the town of Fountain Hills, and then periodically give updates to the town council. As I stated, I think this is very important, and I think the residents would appreciate the council's taking a proactive stance in this particular matter. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Magazine?
Grady, you said there were three proposed flight paths, one of which would affect Fountain Hills, correct?
Yes.
Would that same flight path affect Scottsdale?
No. It was on the other, it was on the east side of the McDowell Mountains.
I was going to suggest that we try to piggyback on what they're doing with their lobbyists. Do we have, do we have a cost for any of this?
I have a good idea what an estimate would be for representing us. At this point, I think it would be, you're probably looking about $30,000. I'm not quite convinced. I have a couple firms I'm going to be checking in with that wanted to make sure the council gave direction on this first.
Can I just, I want to just answer one of the things. The FAA, when it first came out and they, and they were making these proposals, we were not involved because it was okay. It's actually the City of Scottsdale that made the recommendations for the one, for a couple of different changes. But one of the changes is actually the one that's really unfortunate for us. So it would be Scottsdale's preferred, or they had two different proposals, and it's actually one of their proposals that would not be beneficial to us.
We, we don't, we actually don't believe that Scottsdale's really impacted by these flight plans. I think what's going on is the Scottsdale Air Park is impacting the north Scottsdale residents because of the flight paths. So in other words, people who live in the north part of Scottsdale, they're getting the noise and impacts from the Scottsdale Air Park as they're taken off the jets, and I believe that that airspace is, it's not quite as high as it could be because of the Phoenix Sky Harbor. So I believe it's not really because of Sky Harbor flight pass as much as it is their own airport that's causing the issues.
Councilwoman?
Have we tried first to speak with any of our senators, representatives, and congress before we think about spending some money?
Well, typically what happens is, they don't get involved too much at this level. And I believe Martha McSally, Senator McSally, did have a community meeting where she was seeking input from folks when this issue came up. So yes, we can do that, but the problem is, it's really with the FAA at this point. And so, unless they have a plan, I think we need to really try to put our position out there and then try to have a strategy, basically, that we articulate and come up with an alternative. And my alternative would be basically that we just keep the current status quo. I mean, there's no other flight path that I would recommend at this point. But I think what we're really paying for is the access to senators and congressmen and their staffs, and that's what you're really paying for with a lobbyist. We could do all we could or want at our level, but it's not going to have the same impact as people that have regular relationships with these congressmen and senators, and that's what you're really paying for.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Grady, what's the timeline for needing to make a decision on this? Because I would, I mean, it's no secret that Congressman Dave Schweickert is a Fountain Hill resident. If we could sit and talk with him first and get his input, I mean, I hate to be the guy that constantly complains about spending money, but 30 grand's a lot of money. a lot of money. I would sure like to...
Well, I'll tell you, so this is what we're up against. I don't disagree with you, but we're up against the fact that the City of Scottsdale hired a very high-powered, probably $500-an-hour firm back in Washington DC to try to represent them, and they've been involved from the get-go on this. And so, we're already behind. In fact, very distressed that the City of Scottsdale, as a courtesy, didn't bother to let us know about this. When the mayor went ahead and sent a letter off to the FAA, she at least had the courtesy to copy their mayor and also the Fort McDowell president on this. I don't disagree with your, your, your point on this. I think it's more of just timing, if anything.
Is there a way that we can piggyback onto them, even though we're a little bit late to the party? Is there a way that we could piggyback onto this firm that Scottsdale's already...
They have a conflict of interest. They would not represent if we have a different take on this.
I mean, if you give me 10, I'll go to Washington and spread it around.
Councilman, unfortunately, I think the Scottsdale proposal is the one that we're, that we're really trying to avoid. I think what we're doing how is we're giving...
Regardless of what is going on, I mean, Scottsdale wants to change this. We don't want to change.
Yeah.
We're not satisfied with the way it is. Because right now, you, you see the flight paths, they're just going right, pretty much along the B-line, all the way to the 202, and then they use the kind of the 202 to fly right into Phoenix Sky Harbor. So, we're minimally impacted. You can see the air traffic, but you don't have the noise.
And Councilman, now, you know, I found out about this almost by accident, and so, and then I had to, you know, get into action, and it's really hard to spend the time and what needs to be done here. One thing we're doing, though, is we're authoring, authorizing the town manager to look into this. One of the things maybe you could ask is if Fort McDowell or I could do that, to see if they would like to be in, because they would be on, they would be on the same page as us, want, not wanting this changed. So, I did reach out, but I haven't heard back. But we could try that also. And, you know, maybe we say we don't want it to be more than 20 or something, or, you know, put some kind of a limit on it. But I feel like unless somebody has the ability to really follow this thing, I don't feel like I do. But I, but, you know, I feel like if, if we hadn't, if I hadn't just found out by accident, you know, this is one of the things that happens when you don't have an intergov or that kind of thing, and it kind of falls back to some of your other comments about some of the other things that we have to outsource for. It's kind of the name of the game for being a little bit of a smaller place and not having that kind of everything under one umbrella. And this is a, this is a big one in a lot of ways, but this is a more immediate need. Yes, sir?
Having played in this game in Washington, I'd like to, if Grady would allow, I'd like to see what responses he gets from the firms, who their players are, how much time they're going to put in, who they know, a strategy and so on.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you. And I think, you know, citizens would be more disappointed if we don't do anything and the routes get changed and, and we have to live with that versus, you know, ultimately, probably spending some money to try to keep the status quo and keep the relatively, you know, quiet skies that we have. So, I, I know it's, it's money, but I think, again, the flip side is, you know, citizens would be more disappointed if we don't try to lobby this.
I appreciate that. You know, there's, after doing this for a lot of years, there's no guarantees, but I think we have to give it our best shot. But, you know, you're certainly free to put a cap on this, obviously. Councilman or Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm curious if there's been any research done to determine what the responsibility of the FAA is with publicizing potential changes, and if that's public knowledge. I would think that before you engage in having a lobbyist, lobby firm try to change something, if they're not ultimately changing any of the flight patterns, there's nothing to be lobbying. If, if they, if they publish their potential changes, that's when I would think we would want to be engaged. And I think that's where you'd have Fort McDowell, and I think there's areas of Fort McDowell that are already off limits to any flight patterns. Red Rock, I believe, is considered some sort of a special area to the, to tribe. I think that's what I've heard for 20 years that I've been around. So...
I think there might be a misunderstanding. So, there have been three flight path proposals that have gone to the FAA. As a result, the City of Scottsdale getting involved in this. They shut off the public comp, the public input. The mayor was able to get her letter in by the last, the day before the last day that was due. Okay? And that's only because she had somebody let her know that this was going on. Nobody, nobody notified our town. And so, my concern is that we've got three potentially viable alternatives here for the FAA to take into consideration. Now, they may hold public hearings later on, but I think you want to get, you hit them pretty hard on the front end of this, so they don't go too far along a path that we don't agree with.
Mayor, just for clarification, so what you're saying then is that they've already established new flight patterns?
Based on public input that the City of Scottsdale had.
And, and it's adversely affecting Fountain Hills, and we can, we have...
One, potentially, two of the three may be potentially negatively affecting our town.
And Council, Vice Mayor, the FAA did let us know, so we knew that this was happening. We didn't know about the, the Scottsdale proposal part of it.
Right.
So, I don't know if the FAA had an obligation to tell us about some input that they got. They did reach, they did meet some kind of obligation, because we did know that it was happening from the FAA point of view. But then it's kind of like they got a proposal, and that's the thing I didn't know about until...
So, the FAA notified Fountain Hills that there's a change in the patterns, and then...
Well, I don't think they were proposing a change. I think what happened is that the change is coming from Scottsdale, the proposed change, because they used their opportunity to have input to, to propose these changes.
Is there something that we can see as a council to, to, to look at these documents, to show where the...
It's been in the paper, and they have the path and everything. I mean, it, it's...
What paper? Fountain Hills Times?
Ah, it was in, oh, boy, I don't remember. I mean, I...
Have you seen it? I haven't seen it.
No, I don't think it was in the...
So, four of the council...
We actually, well, wait a minute. We actually had this as an attachment.
For the letter?
For some reason, it didn't get in. But there was, if you look at your staff report, it shows it's supposed to be attached.
Oh, it's here now.
The article and the letter from the mayor.
The independent.
But we also, we also had a flight, it, we also had a graphic that showed the three.
Oh.
And that should have gotten in the packet, but we did have that. We will be happy to send that off to you tomorrow, Vice Mayor.
But all this discussion is sort of...
It's hard to see.
Defining what the problem is.
If you, if you blew up that, it would still be very hard for you to distinguish, because it's, it's, it's like engineering ease. It's showing flight contours above our airspace. It's very hard to follow if you're a layperson like we are.
Yeah, like, are they landing? Are they taking off? So, there's a lot here that...
So, what, what the plan is, and I, I understand the concerns I'm hearing from, from the council, what we're trying to do is try to, like, catch up for the time that we weren't able to be up on top of this. And we'd like to report back to you at the August 13th council meeting. One, about the firm, how much it's going to cost us, and then hopefully, if we have a strategy in place by that time, to share that with you as well. So, that, that's what we're proposing.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could we, I, I don't know, because we're early to the game and everything, but should I assume that you can get an audience with Congressman Schweickert and discuss this with him? And, or does he already know? Has he been, has he been advocating on our behalf? I'll be more than happy to call him.
I, I think that's a great idea. Just keep in mind, too, that he also covers Scottsdale residents and Paradise Valley residents. So, it's, it's, he's just not our own congressman. He's got a lot more people next door that he's representing as well.
I have spoken to...
We know where he stands on it.
I don't know. I don't know how he stands on it.
And where the voters are.
How many votes in Scottsdale?
I don't know. I mean, it may just be like a committee thing, too, and he may not be on the committee. So, it's, it's, this is the knowledge we don't have.
Mayor, can I, I just want to ask the town manager, just a point of clarification. This is within your, this is within your budgetary to make a decision on your own.
Totally. And I only brought this to the council's attention. This is a pretty big issue. And I didn't want to just do this and then come back later and you guys go, why didn't we know about this? So, that's why it's before you tonight. And to get some awareness, hopefully, the newspaper can cover this as well. But that's absolute, it's within my expenditure authority.
Okay. Do we have a speaker cards?
Yes.
Bob Shelstrom.
Hello, I'm Bob Shelstrom from Fountain Hills. Nice to meet you. And just want to say a few things here. First of all, if you're going up against Scottsdale, $30,000 isn't going to cut it. I mean, if they're paying for $500 lawyers, that just won't even get you in the door with the ante. So, the question is, are you spending good money against bad? Second thing is, I served Chicago Public Schools when O'Hare Airport in Chicago was changing all its landing and takeoff strip configurations. And I got used to doing, reviewing their acoustic reports. And I know a little bit about what the FAA owes you if they get over certain acoustic amounts. We got over a dozen schools, large schools, that had to have all their windows replaced with double hung, not double hung, excuse me, double-gauge, acoustically insulated windows. And since they were no longer operable, we got all-new air conditioning and heating systems for each one of those schools. By the time it got done, for them meeting the requirements, it cost them a bundle. And believe me, if we were to look into this, and I'd be happy to help out the council pro bono, this could be a very expensive item for the FAA that perhaps would be more expensive than what Scottsdale might be offering them. So, we have that option. I think we have to look into that. The other thing, is there an acoustic report out yet? Has anybody here seen it? Because that's really the gold here. Because if you can show through your acoustic reports, that's above federal limits, and there are federal limits, for what happens in houses and public buildings, you've got one heck of a hammer that you don't have to hire a lobbyist for. It's more something that could be help with our attorney. Lastly, when you look into a deal like this, there are other issues that we can do with this. And I can tell you right now, the, the player at the table who's got the most cards is the Indian Reservation. The way the treaties work, they have a lot of legal clout for saying no. And if it affects them as much as it affects us, and it exceeds federal standards or even less than federal standards, they're the folks who could really put the kibosh on this very quickly. So, before going on to the greasing everybody and doing the lobbying issues, I think you have to look into what our, in fact, cases are for opposing this. Because if you get into the conversation, I know Mr. Maggie is well-experienced in lobbying issues. That's usually a last rather than a first resort, but I agree with the council that Mr. Schweickert is the man whose job this is to get it done, and he is up for reelection in 2020. So, I think this is a very good area to take care of that before we start spending money. But I also agree with you, it's fair to get proposals at this point. But it doesn't look like we're going to overcome the Goliath and using the acoustic report and alliance with Fort McDowell. I think we can get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman?
I'd like to address, not to you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to address the cost, the cost figure. You can get it done for $30,000. You're going to get a second or third-rate lobbying firm. You're not going to get any principals. You're going to get second-tier or third-tier people. And so, I don't want anybody to kid themselves to think that they can get a first-rate lobbying firm and get the kind of people you need doing this for $30,000. I'm guessing it's going to cost a lot more.
So, a lot of it has to do with how long this is protracted and how long it takes, obviously. So, if it was one of those situations where it was going to cost more, then you come back and come back to council and authorize additional funding if it was going to be exceeding that. But I think at least to get going, develop a strategy, do a consult on that is what I'm looking at. And obviously, it's going to be more than, you know, it's going to be a lot more that we're going to get out of services than just a consult and a strategy. So, I, I think there's also a lot of good lobbying firms here in Arizona that have the relationships established with our members of Congress, and also have the relationships established with Phoenix Sky Harbor, because ultimately, it's their airport that's making the changes. So...
Mr. Troy?
Thank you. Any other discussion or speaker cards? No? Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
To approve. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This passes. Our last item is about a grant. Grady?
Thank you. I'm going to call on James Smith, our, our new economic development director. James recently found this new National Endowment for the Arts grant that he thought might be a really good fit. And we had a brainstorming session, and why don't you go ahead and take off and share what the idea is?
Yeah, thanks, Grady. So, this grant was presented to Arizona communities by the Arizona Commerce Authority. It is through the National Endowment for the Arts. It's their R-Town program. And there's pretty great discretion with how you can use those funds. So, it's related to placemaking, so you can install art, you can, we believe that we could make improvements possibly to the fountain. We, it is related to events and musical performances, dance performances. It's quite broad in terms of how the funds can be used. And so, we really believe that this is an opportunity, maybe to fund some of the things that we've talked about, that we would like to be a part of the 50th celebration. The reason for coming to you tonight, we're on a pretty tight timeline. August 8th is the first kind of submittal, so we wouldn't meet the next council meeting. So, we wanted to bring this to your attention tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir?
This may surprise staff, but I'm having a little, little trouble with this, because I'm, I'm remembering the discussion we had regarding decorations on Avenue of the Fountains, where we were presented with what some of us thought was a Cadillac, spending just too much money. And so, we pared it way back. $150,000 sounds like a lot of money to me for a celebration. So, one question I have is this.
I, I think, I think there might be some point here that didn't get conveyed. We're looking at actually infrastructure. We're looking at improvements to the fountain and doing something really cool to celebrate not only our 50th anniversary, but also maybe have this be something that lasts for the next 50 years. So, we're talking about lighting and some really cool things that we could really do, some enhancements to the fountain as part of our 50th anniversary.
We're not importing the Navy band.
I know it.
If, if, let me just, let me ask this. If we get that grant, and we find that the total is going to come to, let's say, $100,000, can we back off and take half of what there's, what they've approved? We don't have to accept $75,000.
That's my understanding, Councilmember.
Okay. I mean, I, I'd like to have us as a council take a careful look at how we're going to spend that money.
So, it's a fair question. And I have to tell you, the only reason why this isn't really fully fleshed out is James just started last, a week ago Monday, brought this to our attention, and it seemed like a really, what a great deal this is. We, we do think that we're going to be putting some money out on the fountain anyways that we need to do. So, we're thinking that some of the regular repair items that we need to do, we've got some really, the lighting on the base, it looks like it's really shot. So, there's some of that that we need to do, and some of the grates, and there's been erosion. So, there's a lot of things that we need to do to maintain that. But we also thought there could be enhancements with lighting. That would really, like, maybe be colorful lighting that we can do, like light shows around the lake. So, it's, it's, that's what we're really after. And I think if the grant can help pay for a good chunk of that, then I think it's really, it's a win-win for the community.
Thank you. And, and Councilmember, if I could kind of add on to that. So, the award amounts are between 25 and 200,000. So, there's no guarantee we would even get the 75. It's very possible we could be on the lower end. You know, that last year, there was about 25% success rate with communities that submitted for this grant.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman?
And it looks like we can provide the money if we were to get the 75 in terms of the budgeting and the fiscal years and all that kind of thing.
Good question. By the time this would actually be awarded, it would be awarded for the next fiscal year. So, we'll miss this year, but we can start budgeting next year for our match. And so, and we'll have a better idea as to what... and we'll have a better idea as to what, at that time, we would use that money for.
Yeah, we would have, you know, much more detail. This is kind of a quick, quick job here. Any speaker cards? Nope? Any further discussion or motion?
Move approval is written.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. So, our last item is discussion direction to the town manager. Anybody have anything that you'd like to add for the good of the order? August is drowning prevention month, so please stay safe, everyone. We have our Fourth of July, that's going to be at the Fountain Park, 6:00 PM on the Fourth of July. It's, go to experiencefountainhills.org to get all those details. Also, since we're not meeting till August, if you're old enough to remember where you were on July 24th, 1969, I know, I know you aren't, but it was the 50, it's going to be the 50th anniversary of the Walk of the Moon, first walk on the moon. It's also, later this summer, going to be that other American phenomenon, 50th anniversary of Woodstock, which was right in my, my neighborhood when I was growing up, near Bethel, New York. And at Woodstock, Janis Joplin sang "Summertime," and "Living is Easy." So, let's hope that, that everybody has a good summer. Try to stay cool, and I hope your living is easy and safe, and you have fun, and we'll see you August 13th, but also feel free to contact us anytime. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Next.